Good morning, everybody. It's nine thirty on November first. Welcome to the First Regular County Commissioners' Regular Meetings for November. Hard to imagine we've gotten to November. Really excited that it's going to be sixty degrees in November. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Commissioner Rivera.
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Goss are also here. Would you stand in judgment of the proceedings?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is a public hearing, and so we have one up today. It's Romeo's Ridge Subdivision Preliminary and Final Platte Application SB-11-22. We'll go first here in the room. Would anybody like to speak on or against the Romeo Ridge Subdivision Preliminary and Final Platte? Okay, how about online? Would anybody like to speak on or against the Romeo Ridge Subdivision Preliminary and Final Platte? Last call, both online and in person. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to close that public hearing.
I move that we do close the public hearing on the Romeo Ridge Subdivision Preliminary and Final Platte Application.
Second. Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing in singing, then all's in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, I'll oppose same side. That motion carries. Item four, comments from the public. Anybody in person like to make a comment this morning? Yeah, David, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to introduce to you Lisa Erickson. She's our new Assistant Planner Environmental. She'll be working on the wastewater applications, floodplain applications, and helping with cap implementation and those types of things. So she's been with us about two or three weeks now?
Yes, about three weeks.
So she's hit the ground running. She's learning all the regulations and state stuff. And so we're excited to have her and just want to introduce her to her.
Oh, Lisa, welcome, man. Here in the exciting times, right? Are you from Miami University or?
Well, we've been here about twenty-five years.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it feels like home.
Well, welcome and thanks for joining us.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Thanks, David. Anybody else like to make a public comment? How about online? Anybody like to make a public comment online? Commissioners, I entertain a motion to both public comment.
I move we close the public comment.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing in singing, then all's in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose same side. That motion carries. Item five is disclosures. Mr. Rivera, any disclosures?
I have none.
Mr. Richardson, any disclosures?
I have none.
And I have a... I will stay out of the discussion. And the voting, bribe eighteen, as my... That does have a pick, which I work for, will be covered in that CSB G. So. Considerations for changes on the agenda. Jennifer, please, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I would like to remove items eight and nine from today's agenda. We've had some other considerations come up that we're going to be looking into, and we expect to have an RFP to you. Hopefully, the first one at your next meeting. But if not, it will be the first meetings in December. So we could remove eight and nine today.
Okay. Anybody else for changes to the agenda? Item seven, approval consent agenda. Commissioners, I entertain a motion to... Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing in singing, then all's in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same side. That motion carries. We are on to the regular agenda and zooming right through to number ten. Present for approval allocation of the American Rescue Act CFDA number twenty-one point zero-two-seven funds for the use of Albany County IT for the purchase of firewalls in the amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand, five hundred and six dollars and eighty-five cents. Adam, are you with this?
I am. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep, guys are up there.
Perfect. So this pairs with the next item, item eleven, that you'll see before you, which is a quote on the firewalls as a part of the original ARPA conversations. This was a project of interest on the IT side. The firewalls are coming of age, need to be replaced. The segmented conversation there is also of firewalls that can essentially beef up and be proper for the connections that you guys negotiated and contracted under. So a firewall that can handle the traffic that's to come as well as utilize and provide a much better and smoother, not the greatest words, but a much more pleasant work-from-home and remote work experience. So this is two HA or high-availability pairs, similar to what is already in form, and then a single small firewall for one of the remote sites that are not on the county network directly. This will use as a secure link to bring them onto the county network.
Thank you, Adam. Commissioners, any questions? Adam, will there be any other licensing that happens after three years or five years or any of that stuff with these contracts?
After five years, we will have to look to re-up. So it's the Unified Threat Protection. So as a part of pretty much any firewall at this point, you buy the base hardware and then the... Or the services that can be turned on or off at the firewall itself are subscription-based. So that would be the renegotiation and recontract minus the hardware equipment itself, probably another fifteen K for another five-year segment.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Commissioners, any other questions? I entertain a motion for item ten, that, please.
We approve the allocation of American Rescue Act funds for the use of the Albany County IT for the purchase of firewalls in the amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand, five hundred and six dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing in singing, then all's in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose same side. That motion carries. Item eleven, present for approval, quote from the Advanced Network Management for the purchase of firewalls via the Wyoming NASBO contract in the amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand, five oh six eighty-five. And Adam, I guess it's just contractual language of what we just discussed.
Correct. It's the quoting, again, Dan, through the state NASBO agreements on exactly what we just discussed.
Commissioners, any questions for Adam? If not, I entertain a motion for item number eleven, please.
I move we approve item eleven as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing in singing, then all's in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Adam, appreciate it. I'm glad to see you with us. Present for approval, recension of lease agreement between the Albany County and Xerox for the usage of fourteen MFP printers for five years via Wyoming NASBO contract not to exceed the monthly expense of one thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Adam, yours again.
Yes, so at our previous meeting, I brought to you and you guys approved the lease agreement via Xerox, through Xerox, through the Wyoming NASBO agreement. When we went to execute that contract, we found that there was an error. The state of Wyoming is not currently a contract holder via NASBO in this specific realm of Xerox contracting. Xerox has stood tall on what they quoted previously. So what is going on here is essentially rescinding the previous lease, re-leasing or a new lease agreement under a different financial source. But it is all the same terms, all the same financing. You're paying the exact same amount as we were through the NASBO, which is, I'd say, very big of Xerox in those regards.
Thanks, Adam. Commissioners, any questions? I didn't take a motion for twelve, then.
I move that we approve item twelve.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing in singing, then all's in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Aye.
All right, aye, I'll oppose same side. That motion carries. Item thirteen, the lease agreement again. Anything else to add to what you told us, Adam?
Nothing else in terms of that. Again, it's all the same terming and pricing. Pete, the only thing I will mention is we'd like to process this go-around via the DocuSign. So as long as it's approved, I will get that directed to you immediately following the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. And I think I've signed this thing down thirty times, but that's all right. Commissioners, any other questions on this?
I entertain a motion for thirteen. I move we approve item thirteen as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing in singing, then all's in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Adam, appreciate it.
Thank you. And again, thank you for the time.
Item fourteen, present for consideration Romeo's Ridge Subdivision Preliminary and Final Platte Application SB-11-22 and a subdivision permit. So, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. All right, so the applicant and owner is Felicia Stevenson. They're located at nineteen BWJ Road. The request is to approve a preliminary and final plat and a subdivision permit. Zoning is rural residential use. There's currently a barn on Propose Lot One, and lots will be accessed from BWJ Road. The assessor's office had no concerns. Engineer had concerns about preliminary and final plats, but they were taken care of. Fire department, Luke Hawkins had no concerns. Laramie Rivers Conservation District discussed the vegetation erosion as well. Their full comments can be seen in the review section. And Y dot said no Y dot access will be permitted, and lots will need to use BWJ Road. Mentioned work in the random way and drainage. And their full comments can be seen in the review section as well. Summary of subdivision permit requirements. Water, lots will be provided water from individual wells. Sewer, future development on both proposed slots will require a new approved septic system. Storm drainage report was complete for this proposal and reviewed by Jake Snyder. Utilities, electrical power is existing. Boson service is also existing. No new roads are proposed. Road maintenance is a part of the Andrew Ridge Estates Covenants, which runs with the land. Financial insurance is not needed. Fire protection will be provided through the county, and notice has been provided in accordance with the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. Chapter four, section nine. Chapter, yeah, four, section nine. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval, applicant responses, and staff analysis of inclusion of required information as referenced in this report are affirmably adopted as findings that the applicant has provided the board with adequate information that the requested and required findings, documentation, notice, and notations have been satisfied by the applicant, and the same are incorporated herein. 結論 of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is compliant with the requirements of the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. Staff analysis, this subdivision is being closed in an already developed area. The addition of one law in this area should not create any substantial impact to the area. The preliminary and final plaque complies with the standards of the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. Staff recommendation was to approve the Romeo Ridge Subdivision Preliminary and Final Platte Application and a subdivision permit, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and conclusion of law, as each are stated in the staff report and Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of the Romeo Ridge Subdivision Preliminary and Final Platte Application and a subdivision permit, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis findings of fact and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report.
Joe. Commissioners, any questions for Joe?
I move that we approve Romeo Ridge Subdivision Preliminary and Final Platte Applications SB-11-22 and a subdivision permit incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law according to staff analysis and staff.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing in singing, then all's in favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose same side. That motion carries. Thank you. It's happened quicker than you guys thought, huh? Yeah. Nine forty-four, yay. Fifteen, present for approval allocation of American Rescue Act CFDA number twenty-one point zero-two-seven funds for the use of Albany County Fire District Number One, Deputy Assistance Program in the amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Luke, good morning. Morning, Commissioners. Where's yours?
I'm excited to be proposing this. As you may have the documents, may have seen the documents running in in terms of kind of restructuring, going away from EAP traditional process through trying to use outside resources of the county to do so. We've kind of moved towards a building warriors approach to it. It's an outside agency that is a nonprofit that will be able to then re-facilitate through Wyoming licensing. We've got several clinicians that are willing to take on this oversight. The goal or the vision here is to be able to start with peer support within side of our own fire district first and also use those means to allow for EAP or clinician oversight for our volunteers and firefighters over the next eighteen months. What questions you might have in terms of the breakdown of it? Happy to talk about all of it. I think we've talked about several things or circled around different things and asked for the details of it. Be happy for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
So you went from having six sessions to three sessions, is that right?
That's incorrect. It's three sessions to six sessions. So the original idea was to have three sessions for building warriors, which is kind of the normal contract per year for firefighter. And then also having three subsidized through EAP by other means such as the county HR. But with this program, we're able to just do all six through building warriors. It's a much better process in terms of everything's consolidated. One, we don't have to have a second agency that we can keep working through. They've got a really good program in terms of being able to have multiple clinicians, clinicians both in this area and other areas that they can do tele. For those firefighters that don't want to see somebody that they already know or if they want to see somebody that they want to know, they have all those options available to them as well. This is just the first step. Of course, it's going to take some build-out for it, but I've met with building warriors as well as two clinicians in town here and one of them that owns a large practice that is very interested in pursuing this. And they actually are excited to build up for it.
And so Luke, will we be seeing contracts with these two counselors?
Yeah, the way it works is that the initial contract goes through building warriors. That building warriors and subcontract to these two other clinicians. Those clinicians, basically, they have a, he said, a scale in terms of how many shades out you are from being first responder status. In terms of if you're a clinician and was a first responder, you're like a great one. If you're a clinician and have a spouse that's a first responder, like a great two, so on and so forth. So we go to clinicians, and it's currently is going to be Lanish Schleicher. And she has, I can't remember the name of her business, and then it also might be Key. Both are being used by local first responders right now, so they already have good rapport with the industry. And then they'll be able to build out those programs as well as peer support program itself. If you're able to look through the building warriors contract, what it does is it provides training for each department. So one peer support member, each department will be able to go through that initial training, two times eight hours, so sixteen hours as a training, be able to start reaching out, looking for what are signs of suicide, what are signs of depression, what are signs of trauma, what are these types of things? And then they'd be able to engage in that person, be able to gauge where are they at with things and be able to give them resources, not, you know, much more than just a suicide prevention hotline. Be able to actually get them in touch with the person face-to-face or through, you know, telec counseling to be able to look at what are their needs, what are the, how can they best be addressed? Both these clinicians are huge supporter of not only the firefighter but also through spouse and family. So we're still building out with your approval on this money. We're still building out exactly how much that can transfer down. But right now, six sessions per firefighter per year. Like I said, there's a huge support, there's a huge outcry for it, both within our firefighters and the clinicians down there too. So this is a big deal for us, a huge deal for us.
This is great. And congrats to you, Luke, for sticking with this so diligently and pushing forward with this. It makes a huge difference to have council services for and mental health services for our whole general.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And like I said, you know, nationwide, this stuff is on the rise, you know, both the awareness of it but also having gone through the last few years that we have. You know, these needs are here, they're now. They continue to be talked about. We continue to try to address them, but this is an opportunity for you guys to really allow us to address them.
Commissioners, anything?
Well, I do have a question, and that is, so when the funds are allocated, do they get spent as they go? I mean, you know, because I guess we don't know how much utilization there is.
That's correct.
Can they get stretched longer? I mean, is it utilization-based or term contract-based?
Oh, thanks, David.
So Luke and I discussed this one because it is, there's such a variable with it. So that's why I wanted to do an eighteen-month agreement with the fire department. Just because we don't know. If it comes down to the eighteen months and he hasn't used, he's used five thousand, okay, well, then we're going to reconsider. If he's used, you know, a good chunk of it, then yeah, I think we can go ahead and extend it for the full month or the full time the rest of the other nonprofits are. But I did do the eighteen months to give us some wiggle room to really look at what has been happening, to make sure he's using funds, because we don't want to be put in a position where they don't use all their funds, but we can't reallocate those funds. So we just kind of want to keep more of an eye on it just because there is such a variable. And Luke and I did talk about this, but that was just my concern. The other projects that you guys have funded don't have as much of a variable. But even I just did a grant for the sheriff's office, almost very similar thing. It's very tough because you don't know what incidences are going to happen, but you want to make sure you have enough funds. So that's the reason for the eighteen-month agreement. Then at that point, we can really look at what's going on and either extend it or reallocate some funds.
Perfect.
Thank you, Bailey.
So utilization-based?
Yeah, and you know, it's a tough thing.
And then we'll hear your feedback from about the utilization suite.
Yeah, it's a very tough thing. As I said, I mean, this need is there. I know that. You know, I work in the industry. I know that this need is there. But it's a cultural change that we're going to have to instill, right? It's a big district. We've got lots of them.
There's that, and you can't predict what people will see in, you know, we would hope to have a very, you know, peaceful.
Right.
Not lots of incidences that challenge people's ability to deal with them.
Right. And I guess I will speak to a little bit of a misnomer in that as well is that if you look through the contract itself, there's lots of different things that, like Bailey had questions about, like what is a CISD? A CISD is a Critical Incident Stress Briefing. And that's something that can take place for a long, not for a long time, for more than decades. It never took place in the United States, right?
Just go home.
Yeah. And in the last probably fifteen years, we started implementing what this is, and it was required after a critical incident to do that. What we found out in the last couple of years really is data supports that those critical incident stress briefings are extremely helpful for some and not for others. And so now it's shifting back a little bit in terms of what is this? What, how do we utilize it? The biggest thing is having the people ready to do a CISD and then having that information known so that members can reach out and be able to do it, not be required to do it, because they've associated trauma compounding trauma by forcing it to happen. So we have to be able to have those things in place to be able to do it, but not forcing people. So it's a really hard cultural shift. The misnomer that I want to point out is that oftentimes we think about trauma only associated with medical or some type of a life loss. But the reality is it's not. I can speak just, you know, very quickly about recent fires that we've had. Squirrel Creek, Mullin Creek. These fires that had multiple residences burnt down, these are traumatic, both for the residents themselves but also for the firefighters. If you think about yourself as an athlete, right? As a firefighter, as an athlete, that's going to practice, going to training, going to practice, going to training, and then you play a game once a month or once a week, or whatever it is, where you've got that incident that you're taking place. Well, also with the Mullin Creek Fire, where you've got multiple residences, especially inside of your own community that are burning down, you're looking at a, like, whole weekend or month-long tournament where you lose every game. And these are traumatic incidents that we don't talk about very often. And especially in the volunteer world, when you start to think about, not only are they taking that right back to their family or right back to the station, not being able to, like, really decompress what just occurred, but then they get to wake up every day and then revisit those same areas and try to help out their neighbors. I mean, there's a lot of trauma that's not being talked about. So it's a big deal for us.
You lose and lose, and you take it personally.
Correct.
That you couldn't, you know, because it's people's property.
Yes.
Things that can't be replaced, and animals, and...
Correct. And there can be, yeah, can be a lot of blame involved with that. But, you know, hopefully, we can train our people to be able to deal with that, you know, professionally and appropriately so that they're not creating more trouble inside their own home environments as well, so.
Luke, since there's so much variability with the numbers, is there enough flexibility with the funding that should a particular individual require beyond six sessions that he can get that?
That's a great question. And it's always a hard question to address. I would like to be able to build out a program that we're able to do that. Right now, I'd like to start out with the six industry standard. I shouldn't say industry standard, because there is no standard yet, right? But if you look at volunteer combination of career departments, it's anywhere from three to twelve sessions per firefighter per year on average. I would like to be able to start out with the six. It's the middle ground. And from there, depending on how that floats with our members, be able to write out in our contracts that if some members need more, then we're able to provide more. But it is a really tough thing to try to gauge. Like Bailey said, we just don't know how much of our culture is going to buy into it because, I mean, for how many decades have our members just, you know, rubbed dirt on it, so to speak? So, and that...
He sees strides being made in the long distance, kind of.
Yes, correct, correct. So this is definitely something that we have, you know, that we're looking out for the future years as well in terms of how we're going to continue to fund it. But until we start, we don't know.
Well, Luke, thank you for the detail on this. Thank you for recognizing you folks and for helping us move the needle culturally about mental health. Really do appreciate it. Just want to understand, the peer supporters, are those the people that lead the critical incident stress degrees? Or how do they fit into this program?
Yeah, that's a great question. So how the program works is, like I said, I don't know how intimate you are with the contract itself, but you'll see peer support academies. And basically, what that does, that gives that brief initial so that those peer support team members, and what I'm talking about there is a volunteer within side of a department, somebody that's willing and able to step up and say, yeah, I'll take this lead and be able to watch my people, be able to recognize when there's signs of trauma, recognize that there's a significant event that just occurred, recognize that there's a need right here. From that, then they're able to work with an onsite clinician. Again, we've got two good ones in town now that we're going to be building those contracts with. That person will be the oversight. We also have a peer support team on top of that clinician oversight. So a whole team will have two clinicians in-house right now that will be able to sit in on those CSDs and facilitate them, especially to begin with, until we start getting advanced peer support team members. There shouldn't be a CSD that's ever taking place without a clinician present, if that was your question. Those clinicians that we have in-house here will also have a team oversight, which is out of building quarters, that will help facilitate, you know, what's going on regionally. This has been helpful. What is EMDR? Can we use that? All those types of things. So there's always going to be oversight. So it's not just, here you go, now go do your thing. Resources available inside those.
So we have ARPA money for this now, and then ARPA money will run out. Have you had an idea of what? I know you get a lot of feedback and a lot of ideas of what it's going to cost per year. How do you envision when ARPA is gone, this being part of your budget?
Yes. Yep. I mean, that is the intent, that is the thought process. Of course, it's going to take buy-in in terms of, like, not only how much is it actually costing us, how much could it potentially cost us, and how much is this funding? How do we facilitate that through our budget? Again, the first step is to start so that we can figure out how much it does cost. And then from there, to try to figure out how do we continue to fund that? You know, we do, we do recognize that. And definitely, that's one of the things that Bailey and I talked about is let's start with the eighteen months, see where it goes from there. We understand that, you know, there's three years, it's like, correct, a total of three years potential. But from there, that there will be that gap. But from there, that there will be that gap. We recognize that we've got to start.
And I think ultimately, hopefully there'll be some Sam's money available for firefighters and sheriff's offices, sheriff deputies. I know they're not the same, but it might be helpful to be able to do it that way. So super program. Thank you very much. Commissioners, unless you have any other questions or anybody in the audience here have any questions? Entertained motion for item fifteen, please.
I move that we approve item fifteen as presented.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing in all its favor, six five, I'm saying hi.
Hi.
All right.
Hi, I'll close.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thanks, Luke. Appreciate it. Sixteen, present for consideration Albany County Recreation Board application to process to begin fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four application cycle. Bailey, please.
Good morning, commissioners. Over the past couple of years, Rec or Albany County Rec Board has indicated that they're not a huge fan of our application. So it's been on my list to do and finally no maternity leave, no COVID, I finally had a chance to do it. I met with Todd Beazer a few months ago. The Rec Board loves his application. So I met with him. He gave me all this stuff, no problem. I took his and went for that. So what I'm presenting to you is a new Rec Board application. It does ask for more information from the applicants themselves. And it does ask about their financials, which was a big piece that the Rec Board didn't want. Along with the new application, I also want to start a new process. What usually happens with Rec Board is the applications come in, you then go through them, you rank them. That's all great. We're going to continue that. But once we get the funds, the funds go to the treasures office and they go right back out. That leaves no accountability for the funds whatsoever. And it makes it very hard for me to get information from them when I need to report back. So what I would like to do is more of a reimbursement process.
You don't want to have anything to hold over.
Exactly. I already see this problem happening with ARBA funding.
Yes.
So what I would like to do, I have created a reimbursement form as well, which should be in your pockets. They can request, they can request funding anytime. After they spend funds, they can request it. We just want to see receipts and I want a little comment of what's been happening. Because then that way, when I go into the quarterly meetings for Rec Board, I have something to give them. I don't have to track them down. Along with that, I did talk to Jennifer and we have never had these applicants under agreements. And we would like to put them under agreements as well. It'd be a very similar agreement to the ARBA nonprofit, to the Tana agreements, but just something again, so we have something to hold if they're not applying for them or doing what they're supposed to be doing with these funds, because there is no way of actually checking on that. So it does make it from a very easy application to a little bit harder, but I'm hoping it's not too hard. Also with this, I would like to put it out for advertisement. We haven't done that since I've been here in the past. But I would like to, last year, the Rec Board actually had more funds than applications. So they would like to see a few more coming through. But I mean, you can only control that so much. So what I, what I've done in the past only is send emails to previous applicants. That's it. But if we place an ad in the newspaper for twice, I will email the previous applicants as well. And we can put it on our website, but just see if we can get a few more. Because we would like to spend all those funds that they have and they would like to see that as well.
And the deadline stays the same as an asking.
So the deadline for the Rec Board is March, right, right on March first. I always set our application deadline always early January, which is later than the city's. The city has more hoops to jump through, whereas we don't. So I do always like to stick around the early January, but this year I'd like to get it out by Friday. So people can have a couple of months to work on it because it is a new application. And we will stick with that because then that has to go through you guys. They do present to you. You do have to rank them and then I have to have everything ready. And I still have to sort through them myself.
No, I think accountability is great.
Bailey, will this form be, so be reimbursement form, will it, can it be a fillable form online? And that would be, you don't have to create paper and they can send it to you. That would be wonderful.
We'll do, I don't know if we'll do a PDF fillable form, but I may just do, I'll do something, yes, in that sense. So I would rather not have paper.
Right.
Because that's the way my office is. But yeah, it'll be something to that, I guess.
I've done this with the city previously and this process is not so onerous and it's, I think is fine. The reimbursement model is really good, you know, I think, because we have to tell them what we're doing and then they give us money as soon as possible. So it's a reasonable approach, I think. Commissioners, any other questions? Entertained motion for sixteen, please.
I need that we provide sixteen as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing in all its favor, six five, I'm saying hi, please.
Hi.
All right.
I'll close. That motion carries. Thanks for those. Those would be great changes. Seventeen, present for approval, budget change request of the American Rescue Act funds from Laramie Reproductive Health. Bailey, please.
So I've talked with Jennifer and we, this is the first of, I think, a few to come. ARBA funding was allocated, was allocated for certain purposes not they applied for. Well, some things are less expensive, some things they end up can't doing. So what they want to do is move some funds around. And Jennifer and I talked that this is the first one, so we wanted to bring it to you guys and let you decide on the first one and how you guys want the process to go from there. Brady and I have already looked over Laramie Reproductive's request. It is ARBA eligible, so we're fine there. The way I have normally done my budget changes with funding agencies is really simple. They, I just send an email, what I want to change, the reason for the change, and usually within twenty-four hours, I get a response back, yes, or no. But so I just want to hear from you guys, what you would like me to do moving forward, because I have already heard word from a few other agencies that will be putting in requests for a change in budget.
Commissioners, any thoughts about it?
So looking at this, Bailey, they underestimated or overestimated some costs and?
They no longer have NP is what they said, and they're interested in a full pass training. So they're, they no longer have something and they want to do a training is what they want to do. It all still falls under ARBA restrictions, okay? So.
Does anybody have any thoughts about them sending an email to Bailey describing the changes? And then if it fits, fine, because the funds are already allocated, or how would you like to do that? Or should she send it on to us for our meeting to put on an agenda if it's just in a meeting?
I don't want to micromanage that much to that degree.
I don't want to micromanage it. If they're not asking to spend more money, they're just asking to, you know, if they hit a wall inside the process and they have another need they want to address. You know, I don't see any need to go down that road that far.
Jennifer, do you have any thoughts?
The only thing I would say is so long as Bailey and Brady are reviewing it to make sure it still qualifies for, I don't see an issue when they're not requesting more funds or giving funds back, if that's something the commission wants to do.
And Bailey, if you guys deny it, maybe they can come talk to us at a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, chances are the agencies that we did already find, they know the rules. They know, I mean, even the ones we brought back to you later. I feel like at this point, they all get it by now and I don't think we should have issues. But if it is something that we're questioning, absolutely, we'll bring it to you guys.
And you don't anticipate any further guidelines or all regulations from?
Gosh, I hope not.
Don't say that.
No, I think they're focusing on other funding at this point. But no, I don't see any more guidelines or anything like that.
There are no three questions. Entertained motion for seventeen, please.
I need that we approve the budget change request of the American Rescue Act funds from Laramie Reproductive Health.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing in all its favor, six five, I'm saying hi, please.
Hi.
All right.
I'll close same side. That motion carries. Bailey, did you get the guidance you needed from us?
Yes, yes.
Basically do that.
I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe just, could you send out an email, I suspect you will, to all the ARBA people and say, hey, this is the process going forward? Super. Awesome. Seventeen, present for approval, or excuse me, we just did that one. Eighteen, present for approval, Community Service Block Grant, C S B G Albany County, federal fiscal year twenty twenty-three, subrecipient agreements for contract C F D A number ninety-three point five six nine for the following agencies, Laramie Interface with an amount of forty thousand, Safe Project with an amount of twenty-two thousand, Laramie Reproductive Health with an amount of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars, Downtown Clinic with an amount of fifty-eight thousand, Family Promise of Albany County with an amount of twenty thousand, a direct vice chairperson to sign. Tracy, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. That's exactly what it is. This is our standard annual subrecipient agreements for our C S B G allotment that we get.
Just for, just for people that understand C S B G, it's federal money that is through the state and comes out to the county and through a. Any questions?
What does it stand for? Community Service Block Grant?
Yes.
It's a block grant for certain community agencies that we just ran out of at the allocations.
I just have one and not to, we're going to turn it on to our chair. But under the purpose in this agreement, it says that the funding in an amount not to exceed forty thousand to be utilized by the organization. Downtown Clinic is receiving fifty-eight thousand. Do you recognize that?
Yes. So each annually, each year, we have a public hearing and we advertise for applicants to apply for the, the grant fund. So what happens is all of the board members then place a value on the, the funding agencies that, or the community agencies, sorry, that have requested money of how we build, what money that allocations they should get. And then it becomes an average and then generally you get whatever that average is. So with the downtown clinic, I believe they use it for dental. They can Laramie Interface, obviously for their emergency rental program. Safe Project, an amount of twenty-two thousand, I think goes all directly towards the Safe Project and then Family Promise for their emergency housing for families and everything. Did I answer your question?
No. So why are they received? Why is D T C getting fifty-eight when it says to not exceed forty thousand?
It might have been a typo on my behalf in creating that, but it shouldn't be forty thousand for downtown clinic.
It shouldn't be limited at that?
Yeah, where are you reading that?
In the agreement, under purpose, number two, first page of the agreement, it says the purpose of this agreement is to provide organization, I mean, is in a, not exceed forty thousand.
But then everybody else's purpose goes and changes. So the downtown clinic, the one I'm looking at, it says fifty-eight thousand.
Correct. I'm looking at the agreement and not the cover of the item. And so it says that you, downtown clinic will be allocated fifty-eight thousand, yet the purpose down here says that no organization will receive, exceed forty thousand.
What page are you on in?
Very first one. Oh, this is page one of seven of the agreement.
Of the downtown clinic agreement? That's interface.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, that was interface. I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. Okay. Thank you. It always takes me a minute to, when there's so many of them and I do the same.
They look really similar.
And I always compare them to the, to the cover sheet to try to make sure. I threw that up before you, so I was trying to catch it. I get it.
We made a huge typo, but thank you for.
You're right. It all definitely looks the same except for the bold letters. Bold capitalized letters.
Does anybody have any other questions for Tracy?
I move that we approve item eighteen as presented.
Second.
And direct the vice chairperson, sorry.
Second agrees.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing, hearing and seeing in all its favor, six five, I'm saying hi, please.
Hi.
All right.
All the close same side. And Jackie abstained for that vote. Thank you. That passes. Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
And to discuss requests for proposal from Twin Pines Ranch to gravel three point seven miles, Platte County line to Cottonwood Harris Park Junction located in Albany County. Rob, good morning.
Good morning. Excuse me. Good morning, Commissioners. Couple of months ago, the Twin Pines Ranch reached out and asked about surfacing part of the Harris Park Road. They're currently working with Platte County to resurface. Exactly sure the mile is probably fourteen miles is so a road and they would like to do the same thing. The approximately three point seven miles in Albany County, they are the landowners on both sides of the county road there. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Torrey and he can give me more.
Good morning, Chairman, Lord Commissioners. My name is Hans. I'm here representing Hoskinson Ranch. I'm also joined by Amy and also joined by Megan. So not here for any signatures or approvals, just here to start this discussion. I came on board back in April and this was a project that was started with Platte County last year. And I noticed it all kind of got dropped over the winter time. The discussion came up with Platte County, you know, being forward with it. And when I came on board, it was, hey, let's start this project immediately, when it was blessed off by the commissioners or Platte County, County Road Bridge or anyone else. So basically you're discussing that we've worked with Platte County over the past couple of months, basically this past year. Finally got everything approved. We've had the agreements in place. We've had the escrow agreement in place and construction's finally been able to start on approximately five roads of county road, on Harris Park Road. All the runs through Mr. Hoskinson's property, besides approximately the remaining three miles runs through other property owners, but we've had approval through them as well. What we're looking to do is widening the road to about twenty-four foot wide. There's certain areas that are right now that are about sixteen foot wide. Looking to put any new upgraded cattle guards in and also updating the water runoff for the ditches. Had an issue with it. A lot of it's really unsafe. There's a lot of washboards in it and a lot of that road chokes off and bottlenecks at some of those cattle guards. So a pretty dangerous area on the Platte County side. Now moving over to the Albany County side. As Mr. Fisher said, we have approximately three to five miles on Albany County side of Harris Park Road. Not a lot of improvement that has to be done on that. It's pretty straightforward, pretty flat and it's almost twenty-four foot for the majority of it. One thing the owner is wanting to do is put a product called Base One down. It's not a chemical. It doesn't have any adverse effects on the environment. They use it up in Montana area a lot. And pretty much what it is, it's mixed into that base layer and it doesn't turn the road into concrete, but a concrete-like substance. So now you don't have to do as much maintenance or upkeep on that road. It lasts about ten years. So that's the discussion. I want to get started. See if you had any questions on what we ran into with Platte County. I'd like to get more meetings set up over the winter. So comes quarter one, quarter two of next year, we potentially can start up this project. We do have about eight more miles in Platte County from the entrance of the ranch until we hit that Albany County line. So there will be some work there to be done before we hit Albany County. But I'd like to get the discussion at least started now so I can answer any questions. We can start any contracts should that come up and escrow accounts or whatever we need to do for the Albany County side kind of established at this point.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions or concerns?
I don't have. For somebody to privately fund the improvement of the county road is hard to argue against. I just think that we would probably, and I'm speaking for me, not all three commissioners, but we'd probably be inclined to, to leave the review of it to our grid superintendent. So we know that, you know, things are being done properly, but generally when somebody invests their own money, they don't want to mess anything up. I, I think the Albany County side is considerably easier than the Platte side. It's just the Albany side is higher and flatter, not flat, but it's higher and flatter and straighter. And it's pretty squirrely going down on that hill down Platte side. So I think that that's, that's where the work is. I, for me personally, and I've been up that road from one end to the other, it's a really nice drive. But it's, you know, some of those cattle guards are raised and, you know, blind. And if, if somebody who's going on a side by side or something, you could wind it up with some carnage. It's not the greatest thing. So it's, it's good.
So yeah. So anything? I guess just for me, I would just want to make sure that your neighbors are on board with the project. And then, you know, but Mr. Rich said I can prove that the experts handle it. I'll see this being a problem here and I think we'll probably be a little bit quicker than my county. I don't see this being a problem here, and I think we'll probably be able to do it quicker than my county. Because we want, you know, expedite it if you guys need it to be done, and it's, everything's parked off. I don't see why there would be a problem at all.
Yeah, yes, sir. So what we're doing right now is we're working with Kobe Roeven from Baker Associates as the engineer. He's coming up with the engineering design plan, and with that, I'd send it over to Mr. Fisher for review. That's what we've been doing with Platte County. James Beal, the county engineer, and also, I'm sorry, James Beal, Platte County Road Bridge, and a Hal Hutchinson, the county engineer, they've both been on board. Hal Hutchinson's the one who's actually overseeing the entire project, to make sure that they're holding up to their standard. Having third-party engineers come in and test everything to make sure it's to the county standard. It's not us having a private contractor or private vendor come in to kind of ski with and say, yeah, it's good, just pass the buck on. This is all through the county. They're checking it. And again, the property owner is paying for all of this to be done. So whatever the county would need when it comes to third-party engineers, come in and QA QC it. Paying for the time for the county engineer, Albany County Road Bridge to come out, that's all being put about the owner.
You guys have thought about most things. So I don't, you don't need any action today. But also, just wanted to start the discussion. Yeah, I guess this position might change in a week, but this commission seems like we're supportive of it. And so let's see what November 8th brings. But thank you for bringing that up to us, and thank you for being so proactive.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, it's interesting, you guys are the most prepared. Anyone who's ever come before us and do something like this.
Right. Item twenty. Accept bid from Ken Garford for the purchase and delivery of three full-size four-door four-wheel-drive for all-wheel-drive sport utility vehicle with upgraded suspension pursuit for police package specifications. And traded one 2007 Ford E-150, one 2014 Chevrolet Tahoe, and one 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe. Sheriff Abellans, good morning.
Morning Commissioners. Yes, this is issued to accept the bid from Ken Garford. We talked about, let's say, last meeting and the other meeting where we had terminated the previous contract for non-delivery and rebid and advertised. So this is the bid that came in. It is pretty acceptable in terms of the SUVs that they're going to give us. Not only for the purchase of new SUVs, but for the trading of the older SUVs.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions?
So the E-150, that must be some sort of a paddy wagon.
It's a van.
Yeah.
It's a van, an old, old command van that we had back in the day. Just no longer serves its purpose, the equipment, and it was pretty.
They only use command vans.
Yeah. So, yeah, no, we are, we're very happy that they've decided to bid on this, that they're going to take some of our older vehicles.
Any questions? An entertaining motion for twenty, then, please.
I moved out, we approve item twenty as presented.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing, and all's in favor, say goodbye, by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all close to the side. That motion carries. Item twenty-one is awarded contract to Ken Garford for the purchase and delivery of three full-size four-door four-wheel-drive or all-wheel-drive sport utility vehicle with upgraded suspension pursuit for police package specifications. And traded in one 2007 Ford E-150, one 2014 Chevrolet Tahoe, and one 2015 Chevrolet Tahoe in the amount of $119,246. Sheriff, anything to add?
No, nothing to add. Same bid, same contract.
There's a motion. Fishers, do you have any questions?
I moved out, we approve item twenty-one as presented.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing, and all's in favor, say goodbye, by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all close to the side. That motion carries. And then item twenty-two, present for approval fiscal year 2022, Albany County closeout letter to the National Highway Safety Administration, high visibility grant for the sheriff, Sheriff Abellans and Bailey. On there, but probably not going to need both of you, I'm guessing.
No, it's just a closeout letter that requires Commissioner's signature on there as well to close out our grant for that fiscal year 2022, for the high visibility grant, which is the seatbelt and the DUI enforcement.
Are there any questions? An entertaining motion for item twenty-two, good morning.
I move to be approved item twenty-two as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing, and all's in favor, say goodbye, by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all close to the side. That motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
So the high visibility grant, that's not, that's not Hyda. Yes, Hyda is, is drug interdiction.
It's a drug interdiction grant. So that one won't review until January.
And then high visibility, I suppose it's kind of like, it's just basically, the roads get safer, the more visible you are.
Yep. It's a, it's a high visibility enforcement grant.
You don't have to stop everybody. Just the fact that you're there changes people's behavior.
Right. But we, we are encouraged by that grant to, to stop people. We still have the discretion on, on making the best decision to change behavior. So we also enforce that grant, utilize that grant for high enforcement as well. So there's two required events per year. May mobilization, which is basically the whole month of May, but including Memorial Day. And then they call it August crackdown, which is the last two weeks of August, including Labor Day on there as well. But the grant gives us a lot of flexibility to use it at high-traffic times.
To cover overtime.
Yep, it's used to cover overtime for those high-visibility overtime spots. So we use it for, like I said.
Hey, a game day would be a great time.
We use it for our game days.
Especially after removing tailgate.
Yep. Uh, New Year's. St. Patrick's Day, Cinco de Mayo, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Jubilee Days. Definitely Memorial, or I'm sorry, Labor Day, usually we try and get it going for every single one of our football games as well. Halloween, we'll have some during Thanksgiving as well, so.
Do your people enjoy the overtime? Do they like working when everyone else plays, or would they rather be playing?
Uh, it's, it's, it's half and half. So the cool thing is that there's enough overtime. We have enough people to where you're not having the same deputy work every single overtime on every single holiday. Everybody can kind of move and adjust their shift, so that we can still have to come to you, but basically, show where all is from. So like I said, they do, we do a lot of seatbelt enforcement, do a lot of DUI enforcement as well. The seatbelt enforcement gives us a wide range of when we can go out there and go out there and do that high-visibility enforcement. Most of the time, that's during daylight hours. DUI enforcement, we use kind of what our statistical high call loads would be for DUIs. So it's usually Thursday evening through very early. But, yep, and like I said, it's a great grant to have, lets us adjust it however it is that we need. So if there's something else that, that comes up, or we have kind of a special event where we know that, you know, there might be, might be more people coming in, and we want to, we want to definitely make sure that people are using their occupant safety. So child seats and seatbelts, or if we have some other event that comes up where we want to utilize that DUI, we can do that too. So any concerts, things like that, we can do some. It's pretty easy.
Awesome. Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it. Item three, twenty-three, AC, they present for approval letter of support of the call of next steps developed by the Joint Laramie Climate Action Coalition. Now, I didn't see this in the packet, and so I'm guessing this is my fault.
It should have been.
No.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't have it.
It's not?
I apologize. It wasn't in the package. That's my fault. Sorry.
I was watching you stretch.
Well, I could just go.
I thought I had it. I'm sorry. I could have stood. I apologize.
So I guess Commissioners, I'll let you decide if we should table it to the fifteenth, if you want me to read it.
Just read it.
Okay. So it's a letter of support. We, the Albany County Board of Commissioners, strongly support the call of the next steps developed by the Joint Laramie Climate Action Coalition. With this letter, we commit to support the outlined cooperative emissions reduction efforts in order to achieve community-wide impact. Board of County Commissioners supports the recommendations for shared emissions reduction developed by the coalition because these recommendations have been developed with representation from the Board of County Commissioners and the City-County Environmental Advisory Committee, which contributed to development of shared history values and concerns and recommendations with the county constituency in mind. The coalition aims to satisfy broad stakeholder interests across all partners and identify joint solutions that work in our community, including through energy efficiency and responsible stewardship of public funds by serving the community across boundaries and entities. We serve our constituency. Laramie is at the forefront of citizen and student-led efforts as the first community in the state of Wyoming to declare our carbon neutrality by 2050 resolution to pursue concerted greenhouse gas emissions reduction strategies. Committing to the joint effort collaboratively will evaluate our entire community's climate commitment and serve as an example for communities in and beyond Wyoming. With this formal support, we acknowledge the coalition's nine recommendations to pursue relevant commitments and enable more formal joint planning processes between Albany County City of Laramie, University of Wyoming, and the surrounding community. Sheriff plans and instruct staff to administrative operations center to move towards implementation. And to monitor and support impact on the coalition stated purpose. It is our hopes that with our support, we can encourage our partners to engage unified emissions reduction efforts. We believe this will build a strong community approach between parties and form a mutual, amenable, and equitable partnership with greater impact than a single stakeholder group could achieve alone. We support this effort towards measurable outcomes and accountability to our shared community sincerely, and in all of our names.
I'm not a problem. Sorry about that.
Okay. Out of that entertaining motion for twenty-three, then?
I moved out, we approve item twenty-three as presented.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing, and all's in favor, say goodbye, by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all close to the side. That motion carries. I guess let's have it signed and round, send it around. Item twenty-four, approved voucher for October 2022.
I moved out, we approved voucher for October 2022.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing, and all's in favor, say goodbye, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all close to the side. Motion carries. Seeing no more business before the Albany County Commission on its regularly scheduled November 1st meeting. I call meeting adjourned at 10:32. That's got to be a record, 1:02. So thank you all for joining us. I really do appreciate it, and thanks for the work you did.